Thank you for joining us tonight. We are reconvening back into open session with no reportable action. Next, we have call to order and roll call.
Councilmember Barnes?
Present.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Piret?
Here.
Councilmember Spur?
Present.
And Mayor Turner?
Here. Hey, Aiden, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? They like to say it first word and then the rest, we all know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You were wondering why I was making sure I had.
I should have told you the wrong name.
Okay, our next item is acceptance of the agenda and any urgency items. Kelly, do we have urgency items?
No, we do not.
Nope, nope. Acceptance of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and lots of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda is accepted. Moving on to consent agenda. These are items that are expected to be non-controversial. We will take them up or we will take action on them all at once unless an item is requested to be pulled from the consent agenda. I have a request to pull item B for the minutes to make a slight modification. So I'll go ahead and read the titles. First would be waived reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting for either introduction or passage per Government Code Section 36934. Second one, which is B, approve minutes of the city council's special meeting of August 29th, 2018, and the regular meeting of September 4th, 2018. Confirm the continuing existence of a local emergency in the city of Lakeport. This is for unanticipated expenses due to the emergency. Approve the first reading of the proposed ordinance amending section 3.05.011 and 3.05.013 of Chapter 3.05, due to the Lakeport Municipal Code to comply with the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. And finally, adopt a resolution approving the addendum to the Compensation and Benefits Program for the City of Lakeport Unrepresented Employees and providing these terms to the city manager. Before we vote on the consent agenda, I just need to add a short speech. Before we move on to taking action on the consent calendar, I'd like to publicly announce that last fall Governor Brown signed legislation requiring the city council to orally report a summary of any council action on salaries, salary schedules, or fringe benefits for any executive managers. Accordingly, before the city council this evening, as part of Agenda Item 4.1, is a recommendation to approve an addendum to the salary and benefit package for the unrepresented management employees and the city manager. The resolution provides straight time pay for hours in excess of normal hours during the Mendocino complex fires and when acting as disaster service personnel during future declared emergencies. Are there any other items that the council would like pulled from the consent agenda?
And you said D was going to be the one?
B.
B is the one?
Who's pulling D?
I am. Kelly will say it. There was just a small change.
Okay, there's nothing further. I'll make a motion to-
Do you want to ask the public if they want to comment on anything? Would the public care to comment on any of these consent agenda items?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda without item B. Let's take on the side.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, so then to take up item B, there was a part of the sentence that said that I'm currently serving in the Transportation Committee, so I just wanted to remove that portion of the section prior to my discussion of no-on-six proposition. Because I'm not currently serving.
What, where is that?
That is in minutes of the regular meeting for September 4th, 2018. There's a moment in those minutes that covers my discussion or my introduction of the no-on-six proposition. It just referred to me as being currently on the Transportation, Public Works and Communications Legislative Policy Committee, but I haven't been on that for the last couple of years.
Okay. So what are you putting, a past member?
I'm just removing it.
Or former member?
Or former member. Does anybody have preference on how we amend that?
Former would be easier.
Okay, let's add former.
Add one word.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion, add former?
I'll make the motion to add former. Minutes.
Second. Great, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion for passes. Thank you.
Way to get behind us.
Our next item is citizens' input. This is a three minutes about any subject by any member of the public for a subject matter that is within the authority of the city council but is not already posted on tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests for citizens' input?
Kelly?
We have Wilder Shock regarding Shakespeare at the Lake, 2018 and 19.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, and staff and public. Start thinking 2019, but before we do that, I want you to know that everyone involved with the rescheduling and re-venueing of Shakespeare at the Lake was very pleased, very happy to report that everything leading up to July 28th went well in the city, but because of the fire and evacuations, we had to shut down the performance and cancel for that weekend. And it was a scramble to see whether the cast and crew and everyone could be reunited, and they all were. Everyone was available this past weekend for the two pre-performances that were given at the Silver East Theater. So, we are already into planning for next year's production, which will be back in Library Park, Shakespeare at the Lake. And it will be Taming of the Shrew, which, in my research, was written between 1590 and 1592, but it will not take place in that time period. It will take place in a different time period, perhaps one you have not experienced through the various adaptations that have been in stage, screen, opera, ballet, musical theater. Probably everyone has seen at least one version of Kiss Me Kate. This one will probably be different from all of those. So, it will be the same cooperating entities working with the City of Lakeport, the Lake County Theater Company, the Mendocino College Lake Center, and the Lake County Friends of Mendocino College. So, we're all looking forward to that. And to thank you for your help and participation, I have copies of a very elegant program, so you can all see who was in it, their friends and family and neighbors in the community that came forward to participate this year. I'll give these to Kelly.
Thank you. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Our next item is a presentation by Dan Peterson, Chief Administrative Officer of Sutter Lakeside, to give an update on the hospital and its response to the wildfires. Dan?
Good evening. I continue to have technical difficulties with my presentation, so my apologies about that. I thought I had brought in a repair bound on my flash track tonight, but it doesn't seem to be pulling out my computer. So I'll just talk a little bit, you know, quicker for you guys this way anyways. I just wanted to come talk to you guys because as we were evacuated, I received a lot of questions from a number of you guys regarding the steps to the hospital, when would we be opening. I know a lot of people wondered what the process was that we went through, and our team did some really amazing things during that time, so I wanted to kind of explain some of that, what was the rationale behind what happened with us and what were some of the incredible things that our team did. So, actually, we were fortunate as a part of the center health system to have a sister facility in Santa Rosa that had been through this this last fall. And so, you know, in comparison, we feel while we were not open immediately after the evacuations were lifted, which is what we would have wanted, and I think all you guys would have wanted as well, comparatively to the facilities in Santa Rosa, both Kaiser and Sutter Hospitals, there, we did a very good job with our timeline still, our timeliness of reopening the hospital, particularly given that, you know, we opened about six days after the evacuations were lifted, which, again, compared to other fires, was actually very quick, because there's a lot that goes into that. So, the first day on Saturday, I think July 28th, we did evacuate 15 inpatients to other nearby facilities, most of them to the South Clear Lake, to Sutter Santa Rosa, some to a couple of other facilities, but that was a huge undertaking. It all went quite well, went very seamlessly. We were fortunate to have had some expertise from folks who had been on the receiving end of inpatient transfers from some of the other fires and kind of knew really how they liked to see that go. And so we're able to give a lot of the good information that patients needed, and other hospitals needed in that evacuation. But that went quite well. For the following week, as we were evacuated, we kept a sort of a three-to-five man team on site at all times, and we had a handful of staff members that really lived at the hospital 24/7 during the time. I know a number of you guys basically did the same as well. I saw a number of you guys here throughout the time, and we greatly appreciate your efforts. But folks from our maintenance department that are keeping the life support systems going, keeping expensive equipment like our MRI machine, is a huge multimillion dollar investment in the community, which without constant support and constant maintenance could easily suffer irreparable damage. And so, keeping those things going. I sat there at the hospital with security guards who had their binoculars out watching the flames travel down that ridge towards their own families, encouraging them to please go take care of your family, who would tell me, "No, I need to make sure our hospital's safe for our community." I, you know, I need to make sure that we're going to be okay for the people that need us when the fires are done here. So it was a very meaningful time for me, some of the things that our staff did as well. What happened is then, so throughout that week, we turned off our air conditioning units to prevent smoke induction in the facility. We did a very good job in mitigating the smoke damage in our facility. We suffered really little to no smoke damage because we turned off our air conditioning units and sealed them off from the outside, but as a result of that, we did suffer significant temperature damages in our facilities. So, when the evacuations were lifted, actually shortly after the evacuations were lifted, thank you to the law enforcement personnel who did allow some of our staff to come in and begin assessing the damage and begin placing orders, but shortly after that, we basically had to restock our entire hospital, all of our room temperature pharmaceuticals, all of our sterile supplies, and a large portion of our temperature-sensitive general supplies had to be completely restocked. We ended up filling two semi-trucks full of medical supplies and pharmaceuticals. We were fortunate to be able to donate them to a medical mission in search of third world countries, so they did not completely go to waste, but they were no longer, they no longer met our accreditation standards, since we were no longer able to use them. And so, that week after we opened, we had essentially constant, or sorry, not after we opened, the week after the evacuations were lifted, throughout that period, I believe it was Sunday to Friday, we basically had constant truckloads of new supplies coming in, semi-trucks. It's not an easy process. We, at the end of the week before, we basically placed orders for our entire inventory of supplies, and the trucks began showing up, and you really don't know until the truck shows up what's actually going to be on it, right? So the truck would show up, and according to the stuff that you ordered is there, there's a ton of it on backorder, and you'll find out until it shows up. There's a lot of stuff that just didn't show up even though it was supposed to, or shortage items, shortage medications, there was nobody could get, and we wound up having to find substitutes, and frankly, borrow from a lot of our sister facilities to get all those medications in that you just can't buy anymore. That was a big deal. We did essentially though, from between Sunday and Wednesday, completely restocked the hospital. We completely cleaned it. We had a team of about 200 people clean every floor, surface, wall, cord, everything in the hospital. We retested every piece of electrical equipment in the hospital. We tested all of our interfaces, all of our computers. We had a whole team of people go through all that to make sure it's all functioning. The reason being because while it only took about three days to do all that stuff, which is a miracle in and of itself, it took us several days after that to go through all the necessary regulatory inspections that were required of us before we reopened. So we felt ready to reopen several days even before we did, but we had to have fire marshal inspections, OSHPOT inspections, the Office of, geez, Health Planning and Development, Statewide Health Planning and Development, came in and did a thorough inspection of our facilities to make sure that we had tested everything and it was all still functional. And then the California Department of Public Health came out twice to do inspections of everything in terms of our readiness to open, and did we have the supplies that we needed, did we have good staffing plans in place. Those are required inspections in a situation like ours, which took a couple of days unfortunately to get done. So, you know, I know there were a lot of questions during the time about, well, can you open tomorrow? Can you open tonight, please? You know, and we desperately, so desperately wanted to. I'll speak on behalf of all of our staff there. It was not easy for us to see members of our community and friends of our own calling us and needing help and not being able to provide it for them, but our team stayed routinely all night long, working literally through the night, every night of that week, restocking and inventoring and cleaning and preparing for our inspections, and I'm really proud of them and the timelines they were able to open in, because it would have been really easy for us to wait another couple of days even, and be able to do that in a little bit less stressful manner than what we did and maybe open the following week.
Okay, I was guilty.
But when faced with those decisions, every single time, our staff would come to me and say, "No, Dan, we want to work till 3 o'clock tonight." "No, we, I'm not ready to leave. It's 1 a.m. I'm not ready to leave because we need to be open for our community." So I'm really proud of the work that they did, and I want the public to recognize that, as well as just kind of answer some of the questions that I know a lot of people have. Any questions for me about that?
Just amazing. You guys did it.
Did anybody put a pencil to the cost of the restocking and immense amount of work and with this kind of, I mean, Santa Rosa, you said, went through something similar? So, is this something that's covered by insurance, or is this like something you guys have to take a hit on? This seems like an immense spending.
Yeah, so we're still working on exactly what will be covered by insurance, and we incurred a lot of other expenses as well. We continued to pay employees throughout the closure, and with the number of employees we had, that was no small expense. So it's several million dollars all told. I don't have the final number yet, and truthfully, what's going to be covered or not, we're hoping. A lot of it will be. We made decisions that we thought were right at the time, and we're in negotiations to see, you know, what the final outcome of that will be.
I know that employees there were just mystified of the stuff that you had to toss, and it's, I'm really glad to hear that it's going to a third world country where they will be happy to get the kind of stuff that we would dispose of, and they'll be able to use it and maybe help them in the years to come, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, it was heartbreaking to throw away, throw those things in the trailer that we were, again, not throw away, but everybody that, when we told them where it was going, felt a little bit better.
Yeah. I feel a lot better. All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. That was a really good reminder that we have an incredibly dedicated team. That's Sutter Lakeside. Thank you. Our next item is to approve and file the 2018 Police After Action Report on the Independence Day Fireworks Operations. Chief?
Yes, one second, please. I had some technical problems, and I happened to, I couldn't get my report up on my device. I need to look at it real quick.
Your problem. Do you want us to come back to you? We could do a couple of-
Yeah, could you?
Sure. Okay, so the next item is award construction contract to Granite Construction Company for the Lake Shore Boulevard Roadway Repair Project. Doug?
Madam Mayor, all councilmembers, before you, as a request to award the Lake Shore Boulevard Roadway Repair ER Project, the responsive low bidder is Granite Construction in the amount of $239,556. This is the last piece of the ER projects, the last ER project that we have, which is the ones out on Lake Shore. You know, our red water walls have been out there for a very long time, and this project is what's going to finish that stretch of road, basically, between Jones and Sayre, or Sayre and Jones. And it involves roadway rehabilitation, sculvert replacements, drainage inlet replacements, and some sidewalks, small portions of sidewalk. And we're hoping that Granite is going to be able to get going on this pretty quick with the fires. They're doing a lot of work for Caltrans and Caltrans right of ways. So, you know, speed is the essence for us on this project, because we want, we have to get it done before the lake comes up. So, we're really pushing to get this done. And the, I think I've, you have all the information. I think I would just entertain if council has any questions I could answer.
Well, my biggest concern is that, because I, we had a recent bid come in for a project, and it came on based on the engineer's estimate, it came in and turned underbid, and looking at this one, it looks like it's 70% overbid, and I mean, understanding that we only are paying a percentage of that, it's still almost doubled the amount of money that we're going to be paying on this, and I'm just wondering if we're getting a little bit of this, you know, because of the urgency, the fires, and the different needs for granite construction around. They know we want to get it done. I hate to be put in a spot where I feel like we're, they're kind of like, you know, got us between a rock and a hard place, and I looked at some of the different comparisons of what the engineer, and the engineer seemed to be right on in a lot of projects, and this one just seems like we might be taken advantage of on this one, but I don't know. And they know we really need it, and they know we're up against a timeline, and I just, I hate to be taken advantage of, and I just, what's your opinion, Doug?
I think in the competitive bidding process like what we have here, that that's not as likely. I think what you're really seeing here is this is the new norm for what construction's going to cost us now. We just came out of a recession where there was no work, and so, basically, these construction companies were working for cost, just to keep going, so that they could keep their employees. Now, with a compound of things, one of them being the economy improving, two disastrous floods, three disastrous wildfires, and now you're looking at a very small contractor pool. When things was great, there was a lot of contractors, but through hard times, only those that were very visibly sound made it. The rest of them, I mean, how many of us know, small contractors, they're just not there anymore, because they just couldn't get the jobs, they couldn't stay afloat, and this is something that works in a cycle. This is not the first time I've seen this happen, but I think what you're really looking at here is the new norm. Construction costs are going to go up, and so we want to be as proactive as we can and get our projects out as fast as we can, because I do not see these prices coming back down in the near future. It will probably be a three- or four-year cycle before more contractors, you know, now you're going to start seeing a flood of little guys coming in now, because the price is up and all the big guys are all working, and so there's extra projects that aren't getting done, the littler new contractors are going to start grabbing up. So, I don't see the price coming down, I see it going still higher, if you want to know my honest opinion.
Well, this is, that's kind of what I wanted to hear, because I've heard home construction costs, some of the contractors that are commuting and so forth, going to Santa Rosa, the costs are absolutely incredibly ridiculous per square foot. So this is, 70% is not that big a deal, but that type of scenario makes a lot of sense. I just felt like, and I know that we need to get this done, and we need to get it done quickly, so I just wanted to hear that from you. I feel better now.
Yeah.
Or maybe the, our engineers should kind of put that in it.
Yeah, that was one of the things-
Oh, most definitely. When we get bids like this, we go back and reanalyze what the cost differences were, and now when we start, you know, and we take from other communities and areas what their bids are, and so we're going to be revising our engineer's cost estimate. You've got to remember, this engineer's cost estimate was done two years ago.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
So it's taken us that long to get through the federal highways program to get this project done?
You could have put that in the report, then it would have made a little bit more sense, because everything, 70% increase in two years, that's actually not bad. That's actually almost a good thing.
I've really tried to work not being so verbose, and because sometimes I do, and so, so I hope I answered. Is there any more questions I could answer?
That all makes a lot more sense now.
Would any member of the public care to address this item? Anything else Doug can say to make us all feel better?
Yeah, when we get it done, we're done on Lake Shore with emergency storm damage jobs, which is a good thing. Strike one more off the plate, and we're going to be very happy for that.
It's actually improved over the previous conditions with the new additions and so forth.
How about all the rest, the park and all that stuff?
Okay, did you want me to do that now?
No, 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 just like I said, that's not our last one.
Oh, that's why-
You said Lake Shore. You said Lake-
Just Lake Shore.
Yeah, just Lake Shore, yeah. Just, oh no, we still have a plate full of other things. This is just Lake Shore.
All right, so if we have no further questions, we're ready for motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further, I'll move to award a construction contract to Granite Construction Company for the Lake Shore Boulevard Roadway Repair Project. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And your votes, the motion carries. Thank you. Back to approve and file the 2018 Police After Action Report on the Independence Day Fireworks Operations. Chief?
Yes, Mayor and Council, so this is a report that's required by city ordinance every year after the Fourth of July period, which starts in late June and goes through the Fourth of July. There's a couple of aspects to that. One, our operation at Library Park, where we have the city-sponsored main fireworks display measure, where we deploy a large number of law enforcement resources to the park during that night, including mutual aid agencies, and the reason being is to increase our presence and try to avoid having any problems, try to, you know, interact with the public and make it as safe and problem-free as possible. Happy to report that during that event, relatively no issues at the park celebration, only one lost child and one arrest for public intoxication. Other than that, everything was great down there. The other aspect is the, has to do with the fireworks use, the proper use of the Safe and St. fireworks, as well as the problems primarily that we encounter with illegal fireworks, which is the big problem every year. And again, this year, it looks like we got less calls into dispatch regarding illegal fireworks discharge, but that doesn't mean the problem was any less. A lot of times, people just don't call them in, I mean, because they're, they figure we're hearing about it from somebody else, because they're just such a prominent problem. And we noticed that again this year, just a lot of illegal fireworks going off all over town, and one of the big areas has kind of turned into a room on 11th Street near Safeway and that area, and we try to respond as much as we can, deal with those, and try to either identify the people that are setting off the illegal fireworks, or at least try to confiscate the fireworks, which is nine times out of 10, that's what happens, is we might confiscate it, but it's very difficult to identify folks, because you get over there and there's 100, 200 people, and you didn't see who shot it off. There's 50 people standing around, and you see a big pile of illegal fireworks, but you can't actually identify the person, so it makes it very difficult, and it's not only a problem here in Lakeport, but it's really a massive problem throughout the state of California, with illegal fireworks being brought in and sold or transported from out of state. You know, I looked at some of the media reports from other cities, and it's gotten so bad in certain areas that they've implemented, tried to implement new technology to try to get more people identified, but it's just, it's just an ongoing problem, and I think, you know, we need to try to figure- And I think, you know, we need to try to figure out a way to try to address it better next year because I don't expect it's going to be any less. And fortunately, there was no real fire started due to these illegal fireworks. But just as one example, we were, we had officers out on a stop on 11th Street and a vehicle came by shooting, burning fireworks out over houses off of the street, you know. So I'm just frankly real surprised that none of those caught some dry grass on fire and burned up some houses potentially because they were just, you know, just driving up the street. They didn't carry their police cars there, they just shot them right out of the truck. And, you know, we tried to catch that one, but unfortunately, we were tied up with some DUI arrests and couldn't leave what we were doing. So that's, that was the main problem. The other problems that we've, we had a year or two ago, we worked more with fireworks groups and got them back on track with trying to clean up, you know, some of these parking lots they use. We did notice that the Reno's complex, they kind of wrote their area off and said, "No, no fireworks allowed." And I think that's primarily because in past years, they've had to pick up, you know, garbage. But we try to, you know, work with the groups before they get sold and then call them afterwards if needed to try to, you know, work with them to, because the intent was that they would work with other, you know, community organizations to try to get out the next morning and clean them up. But it's been going a lot better from, I think it was two years ago, when I said we had, we had some major issues. It has improved, but really, you know, just to recap, you know, my plan is if it's at all possible, try to come up with a new strategy, try to, you know, deal with the illegal fireworks use if it's at all possible. But I don't know that it will be, it's just such a big problem. So hopefully, it'll get better. But that's basically the report unless there's any questions.
Does Safeway Center have any kind of security cameras or that's what it do film?
Not that I'm really aware of. Safeway's got cameras inside. I don't believe they have any outside. There might be a couple other businesses around that have something that reaches out there. But again, dark time, depending on the quality of camera, a lot of these cameras that folks have won't necessarily let you identify somebody in the dark. So it's very problematic too if it's somebody from out of town. I mean, we could have a picture, but we may never identify a name to it. So that, we haven't gotten, that hasn't assisted us in any way at this point.
Chief, how easy is it for our officers to discern the difference between illegal fireworks and safe and sane fireworks?
Very, very easy.
Okay.
Because mostly your illegal fireworks shoot into the air or shoot flaming material. And plus, they're all marked with the state fire marshal seal if they're legal for California. So our officers are aware of what that seal looks like. They have the materials on all the different fireworks codes. We hand those out, we pass them out to everybody every year as a reminder. We mail out, here's the current fireworks laws list. And, you know, my direction has always been, you know, let's try to be aggressive on the illegal fireworks, no tolerance. If nothing else, at least seize them, get them off the street. If we can't identify somebody, then I'll, I'd rather have them off the street and then not worry about prosecuting somebody. But, but yeah, we can do it. It's just, it's just a big problem and most of our resources are tied up down here at the park. So, you know, to deal with, you know, you got, might have three police officers on the street and there's other calls for service that they have to handle too. So it's difficult to dedicate a couple of guys just to do nothing but search out illegal fireworks use. But if I can, well, next year, the night time would be to try to get a special unit, maybe undercover or unmarked, to just to try to go after those violations. And maybe if the fire department had the, had resources at the time, maybe get one of their, their firemen that's also an arson investigator and have them maybe work with one of the police officers. Or maybe get two units out there, two, two man units and try to go out and target and sit and watch and see if we can actually catch some people and shoot them off and make some arrests. Some of these, these, depending on what they have, can be felony violations, are very serious. Depending on the amount of material they have and certain type of explosive content, could be, you know, felony charges. And we have had those arrests. That's kind of my plan right now, to try to work that in to target the illegal fireworks more because, primarily because, you know, I don't want to have a massive fire and burn up a bunch of houses. And they certainly have the potential to do that.
Well, there's so many out there. I think a lot of the, especially the kids don't even realize that it really is against the law.
Yeah, it's, I mean, people don't realize it or they just, they don't, some people don't, don't care and they want to use them, so they get them. There's plenty of sources to get them. It's, it's very easy to get illegal fireworks.
Well, you know, along the same lines, is it possible that maybe doing a preemptive strike and, you know, how they have in the newspaper, it says, you know, the Lake County and the chief of police of Lakeport are making a concerted effort to wipe out the use of, and these will be considered felony viola, because, you know, I hate to have people go, "Oh, come in on Lake County on vacation, go on probation for felony." Because, because I mean, there is, you know, up on 11th Street, we have our big rager. There's a lot of that stuff that looks like, it looks almost like Library Park, some of that stuff going up.
It's that big.
Yeah, there's a lot of big stuff there, but I, you know, to me, to go down and arrest a bunch of tourists and make them felons, I'd much rather say, "Hey, please, don't bring your," and we have signs that said, "Only fireworks in Lakeport." But, you know, this, because we live in extremely dangerous fire area and maybe a press release or two beforehand saying, "Hey, you know, this is one of the biggest fire areas in the country, maybe the world. We'd really like to keep that from happening again. You know, we don't want to issue any felonies, so keep your illegal fireworks out in the desert where they belong or something."
We did do that. We did probably more immediate outreach this year than any other year. And it was a combination of both use appropriately your legal fireworks. And also, it included the illegal fireworks. And we did make statements that these can be felony violations and, you know, and we're not, and just to clarify, we're not out there trying to arrest everybody coming here and make them felonies. But there, you know, we use our discretion and there are certainly, I've certainly seen cases where it's, somebody should be arrested for felony because they've got, you know, a very massive amount of explosive material, basically. But we do use our judgment and we try to educate, but for what maybe, you know, the word wasn't getting out or people aren't reading it, I don't know. But maybe we need to change the way we put out those, you know, I thought we were doing a great job, but maybe there, maybe there's people that we're not reaching. I don't, I don't know. So we'll look at that again and.
Well, quite honestly, there's a lot of people that they, they're already coming up to Lake County. They already know they're coming up to Lake County. They're not reading any press releases, they're not looking for promotions about hotels. They're just coming up to their home up here and they're going to go, you know, they live out of town, so they're going to come to the traffic center. They've always done it. They're coming up on July 4th. They didn't see any press releases, so I don't think it's a reflection on you. It's just, they've always done it and they don't even think anything about it.
Right, I think that does, that is a lot of.
And they've got all this big piles of stuff that they just got from Missouri or whatever.
Right. So anyway, we'll try to do better next year.
I think you did a great job.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
I have no problem with arresting and pushing for a felony conviction on anybody who comes into our city with complete disregard for the safety of the people who live here and the homes that are already here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Agreed. All right. Do we need to actually take action to approve and file? Is that a motion? Okay. Would any member of the public care to address this item?
Nope. No, we'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the, file the 2018 Police After Action Report on the Independence Day fireworks operations.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes.
Thanks.
Moving on to our final item, City Council Communications. Margaret, nothing to report?
No report.
Doug?
Oh, Doug's got a report. I would just like to say that I thought National Night Out last night was just a fantastic success. It was so pleasing to see so many community members out and about and enjoying themselves. My staff worked double, triple overtime, under wraps to get that playground, our brand new playground opened. And all the reports that we're hearing is it's a huge success with the kids, that they are really liking the new play structure that was chosen and is now completely installed. So, and there just was a lot of work by everyone, including council, to make that successful. And so I just wanted to say, job well done.
And Public Works is always a side of heroes for the, they do so much work behind the scenes to get these things ready. So thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Nick?
No report.
Chief?
Yeah, just to follow up, I, thanks, Doug, for bringing that out. I wanted to talk about National Night Out just for a second. And first, because I failed to mention it last night when we were speaking, but Public Works, I mean, we could not have put that out on without their assistance, but, you know, they're our heavy manpower for getting these events set up. So I really appreciate them for all their work and also wanted to thank the other city staff, any other city staff that assisted as, as well as council for the support and for assisting with the event last night. I feel really happy with that event. I think it's the best one we've ever had in six years. And I've gotten, starting, you know, right after it was over and up until just now, I'm still getting messages from people in the community, sending in messages saying that they really appreciated that event. Thank you for doing it, it was awesome. So I think we just had a, I think it was, it went off very well with the community. So, and I, you know, I think there was a lot of factors that went into why it was good. But I think, you know, doing it at the park was one of the bigger, probably one of the bigger ones. Just a great location for it. So maybe we should think about doing it better next year again.
Yeah, it was great. It was, the nice grass makes it feel cooler. I mean, it was a cooler day anyway. It's nice to be on grass.
The weather certainly helped too.
Yeah.
Rather than 113 degrees that it was in August.
Thank you, Chief. Kevin?
I'll just echo Doug and Brad on that, but no other report. Thought it was a great event.
Kelly?
No report. I won't bore you with my training.
Went to the Long Beach, La Vez Cities and learned quite a bit. Seen some people that I haven't seen in a while. And I thought it was a good chance to reconnect with people. Did that, did the National Night Out. That was a lot of fun. Harder than had to load on the bicycles because there's so many good ones. It's like, can't we have like five prizes or 10 prizes? But everybody got a donut and a skip pass, so that was really good for everybody who participated. So had a good time.
Katie was very generous.
Sarah? Counselor Roperlet?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Ropertina?
Convention was great. Great classes, great networking. Tomorrow's lotta go. Right? See you there, Kenny?
GBA.
Okay. That's it.
Mayor, approve Tim.
Yeah, I just, I just want to take one, I know, I know Doug's already said, Chief's already said, but really just a second to congratulate the public work guys on what they did to get this event up and going, especially that play structure. I was there the day I had it tore down. And I was over at the yard and I saw Rod, Rod, and he goes, "Well, you know, they promised we'd have it up in a week, so we're going to get it up." And I was looking at, you know, all this stuff they're loading onto these trailers going, "There's no way they're going to have that up in a week." And all, you know, they, way to go. It's way, way to put your money where your mouth is and really come through for the community. Great job. Great job over there. Got it. That's all.
I just want to echo that, thank you. So often, you know, it's noticeable if public works or parks aren't in a place. And so, because when they, when they're doing their amazing job, it's like, "Oh, that's just beautiful and that's how it's supposed to be." We all go on that. So, yeah, thank you to, please thank the Parks Department.
Most definitely.
And I wanted to also thank the staff, the management staff that put it on. All I had to do was like show up and shake hands with his babies and.
It was really the police department did all the work with the public works.
It was a great event. And it was fun to see all our police officers like taking pictures with the kids and smiling over here and helping that pup down the stairs. Yeah, see? It was, that was a great event. Thank you very much. And that's about, oh, and special thanks to Batman, because he always makes the event every year.
And all the businesses, you know, the generosity of our businesses.
It was incredible. I almost needed the supersized poster just because they just kept going, the list of all the sponsors.
I thought it was never going to end.
It was great. Thank you all for joining us tonight. See you next time.